The Government Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You can also participate in the meeting via Area 58. So we're live on Area 58, live in the room, and live on Zoom as we have been for a while for all of our meetings. And when we get to the public comment piece, I think at the last meeting, we did public comment in the room first, and then we did public comment via Zoom. So if you are interested in participating in public comment, and you're in Zoom, if you could put your name into the chat now, that would be greatly appreciated. And I think, let me just give Tammy permission for comments from the EA PC.
Great, thank you Scott.
Can I just say to Nick, please come into the microphone, because he's angry.
Will do, thank you.
Tammy, I did, you should be able to turn on your video, but I did not see Tom, so I don't know if Tom is coming tonight or not.
I saw Tom, unless he got bumped.
I don't see him. Oh, he's at the top. There he is, he has his hand raised.
Scott, just sort of have video, unless you can see me and I can't see you.
Andy, you're out again.
Am I on there?
No. Okay, let's hold a second again. Mr. Cattarelle is not with the group.
I can see you all.
I see you in attendees.
Yeah, I just promoted you to a panelist again, Andy. I, I think we're good.
Yep, you're good.
And...
Here we are.
Hi, you should be able to turn on your video on, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, welcome.
Not the video music, but... Oh, can't hear you, Tom.
Tom, we cannot hear you.
We cannot hear you, Tom. They can hear him at home, we cannot hear him in the room.
Is there speakers that Area 58 can turn on, or?
All right, Tom, why don't you try now?
No.
No, we still cannot hear you in the room.
We're working on it, and on this end, this time it's not a connectivity issue because we have strong connectivity. And we were doing so well at this, we were, we were running all these meetings, we ran these meetings this way for a long time, without a lot of bumps in the road, and the last two have been a little rough.
Yep. Technology's great when it works.
Do you have any audio, individual members, do you, Scott? I mean, is something on your?
No. I can mute Tom.
We still cannot hear you in the room, Tom.
I wonder if we, is your computer unmuted, Scott? Oh. We heard music.
Who was that?
Tom, want to try one more time?
Sure.
There you are, yes, we can hear you.
Welcome.
Now we can talk, hopefully it doesn't get cut out.
Now we can hear you, we can hear you.
It's loud and clear.
Yep.
Okay, excellent, all right. So good evening, everybody. As we start this new school year in a different and difficult environment, I want to ask everyone to think about promoting respect in our community. Respect for ourselves, for each other, our schools, our students. Respecting of differences of opinion will exist, but we can work together, becoming problem solvers. I know that the EA PCs and the staff of Carver will be working together, leading by example, demonstrating that respect exists when we have differences of opinion, using discussion and open mind to solve problems. So, in that being said, I just want to wish all staff, students, and Carver a great school year, a terminal good evening.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Sorry.
No, no worries, go ahead, Tammy.
Good to speak, everyone. I'm Tammy Johnson, Vice President for Carver, EA PC, National Association of Women in Carver. Good evening, everyone. This week, our school district will be meeting, planning, and preparing their schools for the new year. However, this is not the beginning. These tasks are always ongoing. And our professional and staff members often take classes and attend seminars, network with colleagues, et cetera, throughout the summer to give the most effective teachers we can give to our students. We do this important work because our students deserve the best. Eighteen months, in some ways, seems like a short period of time, in other ways, it seems like an eternity. However you look at it, our approach to education will be changed forever. This year, in some ways, it seems as though it may be even more challenging than last year. Nobody wants to go back to where they were last year. Nobody wants to wear masks. This summer has proven to have other plans. The new variant, the Delta variant, has proven to be much more contagious. It is true, most children will not die of the contract for this variant, however, they will be hospitalized, and long-term effects are unknown at this time. To quote information provided from the August 28 article in the Commonwealth magazine, quote, "Nationally, pediatric COVID-19 cases have been rising sharply. During a seven-day period from August 12th to 19th, the number of cases in children rose to over 180,000, 180,000, from a weekly total of 70,000 just three weeks earlier," end quote. To put this in perspective, in mid-July, 70,000 cases of COVID were reported in children. In just three weeks, that number one doubled. In three weeks. In-person learning is a priority, and to better maintain an in-person model in our schools, as we monitor the vaccination and vaccination rates in our region, we need to do what we know works. Provide layer code and mitigation procedures, and that includes wearing masks. When I wear a mask, I do it because I care about the people around me. I know wearing masks is a major assist in slowing the spread of this dangerous virus that is mutated to something more dangerous. As a teacher in the Carver School District, a teacher of 28 years, I am very concerned about how my perspective will be received. I've always felt very fortunate to work in such a supportive district, some of the most amazing children around. The past year, I've always enjoyed my students and feel I learn as much from them as they do from me. In the past, last year, our children in Carver proved to be the true heroes. They persevered through all the challenges, academics and beyond. Yet this year, there is so much more uncertainty. Whether students or their families agree or disagree with my stance on what I ask, I believe I'm doing the right thing for them, for my own family and our community. I'm wary about how my students will feel coming into our classroom. Whether you support the mandate or not, I ask for community members to support our school districts the best they can. Let us focus on teaching our students. Let us show them that treating each other with respect and understanding is something we all need to do. Every day, Mrs. Cabral, our assistant principal for middle school, ends her morning announcements by saying, "Be respectful, be responsible, do the best you can do." This applies to all of us, not just the students. During this difficult time, we need to support each other, even if we don't know what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, so as Mr. Neve had said, as we did last time, we will start with public comments from people that are in the room with us. But if there is anyone that's on Zoom that would like to speak during public comments, if you could please, if you have not already, enter your name into the chat, that way we can make sure that you're recognized. So with that being said, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak?
I'm confused.
You can come right up to the table, sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. Jerry D. Costa, 71 West Street. At the last meeting, you ruled that the mask policy would be optional, which gave parents the choice on masking. Since then, the DESC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has overruled every community in the state by reinstituting a blanket mask mandate for all students. I have nieces and nephews in the Carver school system, and we pay a hefty tax bill every year to support that school. So I'm here in full support of the parents that are outraged at this ruling. By the way, how does it feel, members, to know that you've been overruled by a bunch of people who couldn't find Carver on the map? It gives you some idea of how these parents feel. The Board's authority is found in the Mass General Laws, Chapter 69, Subsection 1B. It states, "The Board shall establish policies relative to the education of students in public, early childhood, elementary, secondary, and vocational technical schools." According to the statute, these duties are confined to such matters as establishing certification standards for teachers, reviewing federal grant applications, and auditing the academic performance of schools. There is no power granted anywhere in the statute allowing the Board to create policies to slow the spread of a contagious disease or to increase vaccination numbers. To quote Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, "Our goal remains to get as many people as possible vaccinated. We hope that by instituting vaccine benchmarks among school populations, we will create a real incentive for students and staff to get vaccinated so they can remove their masks." This statement implicitly acknowledges that masks are a chronic burden to students. Since the state of emergency ended in Massachusetts, the executive branch no longer has the authority to impose such a burden. The Mass Association of School Committees, a taxpayer-funded organization that all school committees pay dues to, had some of their members show their disdain for their parents who want to be involved in their children's education. Emails from mid-August demonstrate that. Amy Sherwood from Amesbury, "I get the impression from attending the meeting tonight that some parents will willfully ignore the rules and possibly put teachers and children in harmful situations. Some actually believe because they are taxpayers, they can do whatever they want. It's an American right." Sharon Stout from Monomoy, "Wearing masks is obviously not a problem for children. It's so sad to see many parents are no longer into the responsibility for the greater good." And my favorite is Brendan Walsh, "Those who don't agree with the decisions made by their elected representatives have a lot of choices: litigation, disobedience, take your child out of public school, and my favorite, religion-based schools," where he states, and I quote, "You might get to meet Father Filer, Pastor Pado, and Rabbi Raper," end quote. This isn't about safety and health, this is about control. It's about gaslighting, and look that up if you're not familiar with it. It's about fear and hysteria. We're almost two years into this pandemic, and the goalposts keep getting moved. What's next? Mandatory vaccines, mandatory vaccine passports, and on and on. This has to stop now. I am asking, as a Carver taxpayer and voter, that you step up. Stop this overbearing, overreaching nanny state, "I know what's best for you" nonsense. Take a stand for the children and parents in this town. And finally, a quote from Thomas Jefferson, "When tyranny becomes law, rebellion becomes duty."
Is there anyone else that's in the room that would like to speak? My apologies, I failed to remind everyone that we are limited, public comment to three minutes per person, so I know that yours went over a little bit, I started the timer a little bit late, so I just want to let everyone know that it'll be three minutes on a timer, so.
Yeah, I was gonna just, you already pulled the mic over. Just at home, they were hearing better if you were closer to the mic. So thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Rob Harrington, 26 Beaver Dam Road. I have to apologize, I don't, I'm not prepared, is what I'd like to be for tonight. But I think, quite frankly, I don't think I could say it better than Jerry. You have a well-thought-out argument for everything that this country is supposed to stand for, we have a due process, we have a constitution, and rules and processes in place for how these things are supposed to go. As of last year, we had a state of emergency that made it so that all of these mandates were made possible, and I, quite frankly, can make a pretty good argument that that original stance, that it was made possible by that state of emergency, was actually an overstep of bounds, of proper use of the government. But I won't go there yet. At this point, where we're not in a state of emergency, as soon as it was removed, Governor Baker put stipulations in last year, and we discussed this in a meeting at the end of last year, when we said we might have to discuss all this again, should they decide that they're going to keep things in place even though the emergency status had been removed. They left little claws, little barbs, little caveats in there for holding on to the control they had been given by the emergency, state of emergency that had been lifted and is still lifted. On every level, this is an overreach of power, and every bit of power we give them, they are not going to give back. You guys have to choose whether you're going to be part of the solution with the American people, the Constitution, our God-given rights that it supports, or if you're going to let the powers that be above you tell you how to do things, and just kind of roll with it. And I can understand you going either way, to be honest with you. But I'm not a lawyer, and I don't really do well with legal jargon, but what struck me as odd, if I was in your seat, would be that there's a paragraph in there that states that in regards to enforcing the mandate amongst the students in Carver, and for yourselves and other committees around the state, you are supposed to, paraphrasing, because unfortunately I don't have it written in front of me, not quote, but paraphrase, consult your legal counsel in regards to how or if or whatnot you're going to hold children accountable who do not comply with the mandate. So, the kids have to go to school, there are no remote options, I don't support remote options anyway, but that's a side point. They are mandated to go to school in person, there is no other option. They are mandated to wear a mask, so we're giving them a complete ultimatum, we are stripping them of their rights 100%. If by October, they're not vaccinated, and we reach this goal of 80%, then the children are going to be segregated into the unvaccinated masked kids versus the vaccinated kids who don't have to wear a mask. And how are they even going to know if we're 80% vaccinated without asking every one of us if it's okay, according to our HIPAA rights, that they know whether the child has been vaccinated or not? I can't, I don't have enough time in three minutes to be as specific as I'd like, but the bottom line is, is that on every level, it is government overreach, it is unconstitutional, it is unfair, it is unlawful, and I for one, am willing to rebel, or Jerry's comment. It is unacceptable, and you guys have to decide whether you do the right thing and you stand up for what is right, or you go with what the flow says. But again, why is the verbiage, and please look this up on your own, because there is a rather large paragraph in that PDF that was attached to the email that Superintendent Neve set out earlier this week. It says that you guys are supposed to consult your legal counsel in regards to how to enforce my children, who will not be wearing masks, by the way. So, in other words, you, and you have to put it in writing. So they're telling you, you have to put in writing what your course of action will be to effectively segregate or discipline my child who doesn't want to wear a mask, in writing. And by the way, guys, consult your legal counsel on how you do this. So is it possible that Desi knows they're overstepping bounds big time here, and that little paragraph is putting the liability of those actions we take on you instead of them? So I would, I would be a little questioning, if I were you, about, do they have your best interest at heart, or are they just pawning that liability off on you?
Okay, thank you. That was well past three minutes, but thank you very much.
I'm sorry for the overtime.
For speaking, that's, that's quite all right. Is there anyone else here that's in the room that would like to speak at this point? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have, right now, one person on Zoom, Crystal Wedby. So let me bring Crystal in as a panelist. And Crystal, you should be able to turn on your video, and you should be able to, we should be able to hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Crystal Wedby. I'm at 69 Posdick Road in Carver, and I have three daughters at the Carver Elementary School. I just wanted to talk a little bit about respect, because I keep hearing teachers talking about the students that have respect for, you know, the teachers, principals, whoever set the rules for our kids. I just want to make sure that the teachers can hear loud and clear that I want respect towards my children also, the kids who are on the other side of the fence, who don't feel like wearing a mask and being smothered in school for seven, eight hours a day. I want to make sure that they hear that it's not just respected one direction towards, you're told to put a mask on, so put the mask on and that's it, there's nothing else to it. And I want to hear the teachers for once talk about the negative psychological, emotional, physical impacts that forced mask-wearing has on children, because they're definitely there, and no one ever brings it up. All they talk about is, oh, this variant, and the kids have to wear this, and oh, the hospital for this. No one ever talks about the other side to these kids that are having negative impacts of mask-wearing continuously all day. No one brings it up, and I'm really getting sick and tired of that. Also, I wanted to address the fact that, you know, last week, our committee voted for parent choice, and clearly the teachers' union or someone got upset, got so mad that parents dare they have a choice in the sake of their trial for wearing a mask or not. So they clearly made some type of, type of bad deal with Desi to throw the mandate in our face now, and we have no choice. I want to know what is going to be the disciplinary actions towards the children if they choose not to wear a mask. I want to know, you know, what steps are going to be taken, what policies are going to be put in place. It's straight-up tyranny, it's government overreach, it's disgusting, I don't know how anyone can still be sporting it. And there's no data, there's no proof that masks work, there's absolutely no proof, so I don't know how they keep forcing mandates when there's literally no proof. Our kids are already lost so much last year with school, so if our kids are going to be disciplined for not wearing a mask, I mean, if we're still going to, we're going to keep taking from them, from their education, I don't know how that makes any sense. And our kid's going to be segregated from their other classmates, because they choose to breathe air, which they have every right to breathe air, 100% oxygen, they have every right. So are they going to be segregated, and that's going to cause other issues? And I'm just tired of the overreach, and I think that the school and whoever needs to, you know, think about this, needs to be very cautious of parents having lawsuits towards whoever, whoever needs to be held accountable, because Desi clearly put it in the school's court, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else at this point that would like to make a comment? Is anyone else in the chat, Meredith?
I do not see anybody else in the chat.
Okay, so no one else in the room would like to say anything? Okay, then, public comment is now concluded, and we can move on to the approval of minutes from our June 14th open session meeting. If someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move that we approve the June 14th, 2021 open session minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and next, we move on to communications.
So the school committee has received a communication from Jason Greenwood. It is a letter of resignation. So, effective August 23rd, 2021, Jason did resign his position as a member of the school committee, so this is the official public notice of that. You know, we can talk a little bit about the process that we'll be going through in terms of replacing Jason. So under school committee policy, we replace a member who has resigned through a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the four active members of the school committee. We will post the position, and we'll look for applicants. That will be happening this week, so anybody in the community who might be interested in being a member of the school committee, the posting will go up this week, you'll have a few weeks to apply for the position. Then there will be a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to review the applicants, and then that, that joint committee will make a decision, whether they make a decision that evening, or decide to have a second meeting to make a decision, and to vote on a member. The member who is voted on at that point would serve out the remainder, would serve to the next election in April, which also happens to be the end of, what would have been the end of Jason Greenwood's term. So, in April, there'll be an open position for a three-year position on the school committee. So the appointed representative would serve until the next election. So if any members have any questions, you know, we want to thank Jason for his two and a half years of service to the school committee. He really did an outstanding job, was always, communicated his point of view and his opinions really well, and just thought he was a positive voice supporting the school, the community, the students, and the parents. So I'd just like to take a moment to thank Jason for his service.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Agreed.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions about the process? We'll be putting together some dates, and like Mr. Neve said, it will be posted so that the public will be aware of the process.
Where is it going to be posted?
It gets posted on the school website, the town website, in all-town buildings, so there'll be a public communication of, of the posting. So like any other board or committee that opens up within the community of Carver, all the same process.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you, Jason. We appreciate your time, and wish you well. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
First, personnel updates. Since our last meeting, we've had a lot of, lot of hires, finalizing preparations for the school year, so we're excited to have all these people join us, and I'll run through a list of hires since our last meeting. Kimberly Clark as an ESP kindergarten at the elementary school. Shannon Alzheimer as an ESP kindergarten ESP at the elementary school. Ashley Pedleton as a kindergarten ESP at the elementary school. Caitlin Santa as an ESP lunchroom monitor at the elementary school. Maggie Patton is an ESP math interventionist at the elementary school. Lauren Ovian, ESPN math interventionist at the elementary school. Stephanie Jenkinson, ESP reading intervention at the elementary school. Barbara Barra, ESP special education at the middle high school. Kelly Weatherall, ESP RBT at the elementary school. Paul Reed, ESP at the middle high school. Gail Carey, ESP lunchroom monitor at the elementary school. Sherry Howes, ESP lunch monitor at the elementary school. Gina Pelkey, elementary school lunch monitor. And Lynn Alberti, ESP kindergarten at the elementary school. We've also had a couple resignations since our last meeting. Susan Hannan is an ESP, as a kindergarten ESP at the elementary school. Minnie McManany as an ESP pre-K and, at the elementary school, and Paula Hammond as a 7D bus driver. So we are getting very close to being fully staffed, and we are ready for the start of school next week, from a staffing perspective, and from a whole lot of other perspectives.
Great, thank you.
Move on to COVID-19 updates. So, COVID-19 cases have continued to rise since we last met, so the data comes from the weekly report from last Thursday. So the case count within the community of Carver was 34 positive cases over a two-week span. The previous meeting, it was 13 cases. The average daily incident rate over the last 14 days was 19.8 cases per 100,000. It was 7.9 at the previous meeting. The rate of positivity within the Carver community over the last 14 days from the state report was 5.24%. was 5.24%, which was up from 3.37%. Last time I also gave you an update on vaccinations. So, as of last week, data was reported, I believe, last Wednesday. And this is a little different than I presented last time, but it's an interesting way to look at it, is that 60% of 16 to 19-year-olds in Carver have had at least their first shot and 42% of 12 to 15-year-olds in Carver have had at least their first shot. Now, obviously, that doesn't mean that 60% and 42% are fully vaccinated at this time, but it does mean that 60% for 16 to 19 and 42% 12 to 15 are on their way to being fully vaccinated because they'll have their second shot upcoming and then be fully vaccinated at that point. So the vaccination is actually on the rise a little bit from how we discussed it at our last meeting. So that is consistent, you know. I'll defer to the committee on this. You know, we used to do a little bit more in-depth in terms of COVID-19 and we would compare it to all the area communities and see what the numbers were. You know, the last couple of meetings, I've kept it simpler and just said, this is what Carver's numbers are, and just compared it to the meeting before. So I just defer to the group in terms of what do you want for information on COVID-19 as we go forward, in terms of updates? Would you like to see a more comprehensive report? I think it's pretty consistent with what's happening in the Plymouth area. I think if we were looking at all those towns, we'd see a similar trend that we're seeing in Carver. That's been the history throughout all of last year when we tracked it. You know, Carver seemed to move in a very similar direction to the communities around us, which isn't really a shocking statement. So just really more asking the committee, what would you, do you want to continue to hear a COVID update? And do you want to see more information like I used to give, or is the narrow information better?
I mean, I like having more information than less, but I don't think we need redundant information for sure. I think we need to see every town's levels at every meeting. But I especially would like to see age-specific data, data of new cases. Do they give you data of resolved cases?
No, see, all this data I am pulling from the Mass website. And we've pulled this up before, you know, the DPH Daily Dashboard, you know, which I can share on my screen right now.
I'm looking on my phone.
Yeah, and we can put it up on the board too, up here. You know, this is an interactive dashboard that is updated daily. And then it gives you, when you go into city and town data, that gives you the bi-weekly report information. So that's where you can, and you can look at any city and town and see what their numbers are, you know, over the last two weeks. So I mean, I could provide, I mean, this link's always here, this has tons of data. It does, I do not get a breakdown from age in the community. I certainly could ask the Board of Health if they'd be willing to give me that. You know, historically, the Board of Health has been publishing like an active cases number. I know on their website, they publish, this is the number of active cases in this many households. I mean, I could ask the Board of Health if they'd like to, if they would give me age-specific, you know, just in terms of school age, you know, how many of these, we have 34 positive cases that we've had in the last week have been school-aged children? I don't know that number, that's not published, and that's not published in this report either. I think we'd have to have the Board of Health, you know, give us that number.
Yeah, I think I need to know if there's positivity cases in the school.
And but also, once we start school, we will be tracking that.
That's different than...
Right. Over the summer, we're not tracking that because families aren't communicating to us if they have positive kids or not. But once, obviously, the summer school kids did, and we talked about that last meeting, that we didn't have any cases over the summer school amongst staff or students. But once school starts again, I am going to begin to track that. So we'll do the COVID tracker, we'll update that on Mondays and Thursdays. So I will be able to give you the number of our students who have tested positive. So I guess I don't necessarily need to go to the Board of Health for that because we will track that once school starts next Tuesday. And I'll do that COVID tracker, so I can add that in and we can work out what's happening within our school.
Yep.
So how about that, as we keep looking at these numbers, then I'll add in the COVID tracker. I do want to make a repeat, I know I said this at the last meeting. It's not my intention as school to report out daily on cases. Last year, remember, every day there was a daily case, everybody in the community got an email saying there was a positive student, close contacts had been notified, et cetera, et cetera. It's not my intention to do that this year. I'll say to people that obviously, if you're a close contact for a positive case or you've been exposed to a positive case, you'll be contacted directly either by the nursing staff or the school administration. We're going to look at close contact protocols again tonight. We'll go over what that's going to look like. And then certainly you can track what's happening in the school community by looking at the tracker on Mondays and Thursdays. So that will be updated every Monday and Thursday. So it's my intention to not send out the nightly email anymore. Are there any other questions on terms of COVID update?
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Moving into the mask mandate discussion, or the mask requirements. So I know that I have received some questions, I know members of the committee have. I know some members of the community have been asking this question about what's the authority for the commissioner to put in this mask requirement? So I am going to go over the legal authority that gives the commissioner the right to do that, which people may agree with or disagree with, but I'm going to, this is the argument that the commissioner is making. This is the argument I made to the board, is why the commissioner has the authority to do this. So under Mass General Laws, Chapter 69, Section 1B, "The Board shall establish standards to ensure that every student shall attend class in a safe environment." That is specifically stated in the law. Under that law and the regulations, so again, referencing Mass General Law, Chapter 29, requires the Board to establish standards to ensure that every student shall attend classes in a safe environment. Same language, the Mass General Law versus the regulations established for the Board of Education. Also, under those regulations, it says, "Upon the declaration by the governor that emergency exists, which is detrimental to public health, or upon the determination by the Board that exigent circumstances exist that adversely affect the ability of students to attend classes in a safe environment, unless additional health and safety measures are put in place, the Commissioner, in consultation with medical experts and state officials, shall issue health and safety requirements and related guidance for districts." So that is what's happened last week. Last week, the Board of Education met. The Board of Education voted 9 to 1 that there were exigent circumstances that required the issuing of health and safety requirements for school districts. So that was the Board's decision last week in a vote of 9 to 1. So that, in essence, gave the Commissioner the authority, under the law, to issue health and safety requirements. Actually, it says that he has to. Now, under Mass General Law, and I want the community to be aware of this, so the same section, Mass General Law, Chapter 69, Section 1B, identifies two specific remedies if school committees do not follow regulations established by the Board of Education. The first remedy, "The Board may withhold state and federal funds from school committees which fail to comply with the provisions of the law related to the operation of public schools or any regulation of said Board authorized in this section." The second part, "The Board shall see to it that all school committees comply with all laws related to the operation of public schools. And in the event of non-compliance, the Commissioner of Education shall refer all such cases to the Attorney General for appropriate action to obtain compliance." And the Commissioner has asked, or the Department of Education has asked, that all superintendents by this Friday notify them of their compliance to the mask regulation. So by this Friday, I have to sign off saying that the Carver Public Schools is in compliance with the regulations as stated. So my point of that is saying, they are checking. So they are asking each school committee to certify, or each superintendent to certify for the school committee, that the regulations are being implemented. And then if, the assumption being that if the school committee was to put forward and say they were not doing that, that they would go to these two pieces of the Mass General Law and look to do one of these two things, either withhold state or federal funding, or to turn this over to the Attorney General for appropriate action to obtain guidance with their regulations. I just wanted to share this information with the committee and with the community. This is the underpinning under the laws in Massachusetts that the Commissioner is citing, saying that this gives him the authority to issue these regulations and these requirements. So what are the requirements that the Board issued? And in his opening statement, "Consistent with the authority provided by the Board, and after consulting with medical experts and state health officials, the Commissioner has admitted the following requirements effective August 25th, 2021. All students aged five and above, staff and visitors are required to wear masks indoors in school settings. That this is in effect until at least October 1st, 2021. Masks are also required for any sports-related activities for student athletes and coaches while indoors, in alignment with guidance provided by the Massachusetts Interscholar Athletic Association." And the MIA, the following day, also issued guidance requiring masks for all sports activities, all MIA-sponsored sports activities that are occurring indoors, whether it's a practice, a meeting. If a sports team is doing something indoors, they are required to wear masks, the MIA guidelines as well. The mask requirement applies when students and staff are indoors at school, except when eating, drinking, or during a mask break. So, students can take their masks off at lunch. They can take their masks off during snack. They can take their masks off during mask breaks. They can take their masks off while they're outside. So no one needs to wear a mask while they're outside for any reason. So if a class goes outside, or a gym is outside, you know, anybody who's outside does not need to wear their masks. I do think that last year, in both buildings, both at the middle high school and the elementary school, there were a lot of mask breaks provided for students. So we're going to keep very similar processes that we had at the end of last year in terms of mask breaks. If people want to see more mask breaks, they can certainly reach out to the administration or to myself and talk about the process for mask breaks at each building. But our plan, our intent, is in each building, we'd follow very similar processes we did to last year for allowing mask breaks for students during the school day, both indoors and outdoors, and obviously also while eating and drinking. The guidance strongly recommends that students younger than five wear masks in school. As I said, mask breaks can be provided throughout the day. It does specifically reference that masks may be removed to participate in banned activities. And then also references that currently, which we had talked about the last meeting, by federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear a mask on the bus. There are exemptions. The Commissioner has outlined two exemptions for the mask requirements, which are either a medical reason or a behavioral reason. Both exemptions must be supported by a doctor's note. That's going to be our position and policy on that. So if any family that provides a doctor's note saying that the student has medical behavioral reasons that they cannot wear a mask, they will not be required to do so. And then, as we did last year, we gave an exemption in essence to our intensive special education students. So all of our intensive special ed programs, both at the elementary and middle high school, last year, the approach was, the teachers worked with the students and worked with the families and did the best they could to wear masks. Students actually wore their masks a lot, but a lot of times they didn't. There were one or two students because of the extent that their disabilities were unable to wear masks. So we're not requiring students in our intensive special education programs to present a note to say they have an exemption for a medical behavioral reason. And that's consistent, this is very consistent with what we did last year. It's exactly what we did last year. So I think our approach to this mandate in many ways, or these requirements, in many ways, is going to be exactly the way we approached school with students with masks last year. Because it really isn't, the requirements aren't a lot different, except obviously you don't have to wear a mask outdoors. I know people have referenced this. So another part of the requirement is that they're staying, we'll see what happens when we get close to October 1st. Clearly, they are encouraging students to get vaccinated. So after October 1st, 2021, if a school demonstrates a vaccination rate of 80% of more of its students and staff, then vaccinated individuals in that school would no longer be subject to the DESI mask requirements. As we kind of referenced earlier, I think this is a clear push to encourage families to get students vaccinated. So we'll see what happens with that over the next, I think it would be very interesting to see what's going to happen with that over the next month. I know there's a lot of concern about that specific provision in terms of the mask requirements that have been put in place. I know some people have also referenced, you know, what the discipline policy is going to be. Our intent on discipline is to follow the code of conduct as written in each handbook. We want to work with families, so it always starts with a discussion. I encourage families that are concerned about masking to reach out to the building administration to have that discussion of what things they can do. So it goes from discussion to more discussion, to maybe increased mask breaks, to eventually, the far end of that line is, if you're not going to wear your mask, then maybe you are not going to be able to attend school. That is the far end of the display of consequences in the code of conduct.
That's segregation.
And so, that is outlined in the code of conduct in each building. I know that question was going to come up, so I always wanted to address it. But our goal is to work with families and try to come up with reasonable solutions and we'd ask you to reach out if you have concerns about that. So if you have a specific concern, reach out to the building administrators. Hey, that's my presentation, in my opinion. So my recommendation is that we have to follow this mandate. So, this mandate will, I think it's our belief that it is required and we do have to follow it.
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt, I showed up for you, I just have a question.
Sorry, public comment is at the beginning of our meeting, so we don't entertain questions.
I have a question about the kids that get the exemptions against, for the mask. What about them being singled out by other children or stuff like that? Do you guys talk about that or discuss that?
Like I said, I'm sorry, but this is not, even public comment is not question and answer. You're welcome to email Mr. Neef or the committee with your question, and we'll make sure that it's answered.
I just think those are huge concerns.
Andy, did you have something?
No, I was going to, I'm still gathering my thoughts, if you want to call someone else.
Anyone else have any feedback, Mr. Neef?
I can start. So, when I was dissecting the DESI mask mandate, I was really looking into the disciplinary part of it. It does say that we have to, it's guided by the district's school disciplinary policy, so you reference that in the code of conduct.
So the school discipline policy is clearly laid out in the code of conduct in the middle high school and the elementary handbook, in terms of the processes followed for any discipline incident that occurs within the school.
Districts should provide written notice to students and families about expectations and potential consequences and encourage a progressive discipline approach.
Progressive discipline means to start with having a conversation. Let's talk about this, let's say, what are your concerns? How can we mitigate your concerns? How can we support you? How can we work together with you? To, okay, well, we're going to ask you tomorrow, the way to ask, if you don't do that, then we're going to take this step. And then, you don't wear your mask tomorrow, then progressive would be if we're going to ask you the next day. Okay, you didn't wear your mask, now you need to wear your mask and you're going to have this consequence.
How many days, how many days do you ask you don't?
Eventually, to the point of having that, but our goal is going to be to meet with families and come up with working solutions.
Okay, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, so progressive discipline means you start with a conversation and with each continued infraction, the progress of what the disciplinary consequence could be could increase. And that is not our goal, our goal is not to discipline, our goal is not to keep people out of school. Our goal is to work with every family, come up with a good solution, to implement this requirement that we need to do.
Have we discussed with legal counsel how to address these matters?
No, I think that's, my interpretation of that reference is, anytime that you get to the extreme of the discipline code, so when you, and I don't want to go down, and I'm not trying to deflect the conversation because this isn't where we want to go. But anytime, so say, we're not talking about masks. Well, following the discipline code, in the disciplinary situation where a student could be suspended out of school for a period of time, that, we might refer to legal counsel in terms of the processes to make sure everybody's rights are met in following the suspension. We don't refer with the legal counsel to have a conversation with families about what can we do to make this better. We don't refer with legal counsel to give someone a detention. We don't refer with legal counsel to give someone, but when you get to the extremes of the discipline code, in terms of actually holding students out of school, and students can be held out of school for a wide variety of reasons, that when you get to that extreme of the discipline code, that's when you would refer with legal counsel, or through legal counsel to make sure that everybody's rights are being met in that process of holding a student out of school. So my interpretation of this information here is not that we would meet with legal counsel to devise a mask-specific policy. It would be about the implementation of the code as a whole.
Well, that was my question, because it says we have to submit in writing to DESI essentially what our plan is going to be. Student, we should, each district must submit a plan confirming their health and safety procedures are consistent with the mask requirement. So that was just the next bullet point.
Yes, that is that survey that I have to respond to by the third. And honestly, that is stating that the district is... that is stating that the district is.
It's like one question.
I have not gone through the survey in total. My understanding, we have a meeting with the commissioner tomorrow, my understanding is I'm not going to be asked to actually develop like a formalized mask discipline policy as part of that plan.
Because that was something that I thought that we may have to take under review.
Yeah, that is, my understanding is that is not what's being, to my understanding, we do not have to create a mask-specific discipline policy.
Okay. And then, you know, lastly, my concern, you know, we're hopeful October 1, we're never going to have 80% vaccination in the elementary schools, so I just feel like we need a plan going forward and keeping our finger on the trigger with the numbers and what we can do to be going in the right direction.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that question.
That's my two cents.
And that's what I was saying, we'll see where we are in a couple of weeks, and things change quickly, as they have throughout the pandemic, and we'll see. You know, obviously, I do think that there is a goal here, that the intention of that statement is to encourage vaccination, because there's a lot of people believe that vaccination is our best way out of the pandemic. I know not everyone believes that, but there are a lot of people who do believe that, and I do think that the intent of the policy here is to encourage families to vaccinate. There's no mandate here, there's no requirement for vaccination, but clearly, the policy is set up to encourage that, and I think we'll see what happens in the next few weeks.
And just for the record, I am concerned about segregation when middle high schoolers can take their masks off and be identified as vaccinated versus not vaccinated, you know, bullying, anything like that. That's my thoughts on this right now.
Because it's going to happen.
Do we have vaccination rates for teachers? Because you went over the students.
We do not have an official vaccination rate number of teachers, we have not specifically asked them. We did last year, we did, we were surveying teachers to see how quickly they were getting vaccinated. At that point, our response rate was very high, and we only, I'm giving you round numbers, don't hold, don't hold me solid to the numbers. We have approximately 290 staff members in the district as a whole. Last time we did a survey, approximately about 200 answered, so almost two-thirds of our faculty responded. And of the two-thirds that responded, most people were actually in the process of being, on their way to being fully vaccinated, if they weren't already. So, my assumption of those two, literally, it was a handful, four or five people said they intended to not get vaccinated. So, I don't have an official number, my guess would be that it's definitely, oh, it's definitely over 80%. I feel confident that 80% of our staff is currently vaccinated.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Jen?
My.
I'm sorry, can people in the audience, please be quiet, and please be respectful to the committee while we conduct our business?
I will start.
I understand that, and we're trying to conduct business that directly pertains to the children of the community, so if you can't be quiet, you can please choose to leave.
I do not choose to leave, I'm respectful.
Jen, would you like to speak?
I would. So, I guess my one concern, I agree with what Colleen brought up as questions and points. Something Tammy said during her comment today, you know, really struck me, and it was a big reason why I voted the way I did, even though, you know, she wants to, you know, they want to get back to the business of teaching and educating these children. I don't want our teachers having to be masked police, and I am worried about disruptions in the classroom. That was part of why I didn't want a mandate, because I didn't want them to have to be in that position. And unfortunately, we are in this position, you know, given the reasons, I'm not sure that exigent circumstances do exist, at least for the town of Carver, with 34 cases in town. You know, Carver and the South Shore is very different from the inner city of Boston, but unfortunately, here we are. So, I just hope that we can come up with some kind of way to keep this as easy as possible in the schools without overburdening our teachers with more duties outside of teaching. You know, I want to get back to teaching and educating and positive learning environments, and I'm just really sad that this is where we're at right now.
I agree, Jennifer. The teachers and teachers and parents, we're locked in the medical settings.
Andy, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do, actually. Question. We are currently not in a state of emergency, correct?
Correct.
Governor withdrew that?
To my knowledge, yes.
Right. So, the commissioner's authority under that is null and void, as far as I'm concerned. He does not have the power to do those, even given the reasons he's given himself, he cited, he doesn't have the power because there's no state of emergency. Also, I think we all know that we all were taught in school, at least I hope we all were, that the Constitution is the supreme law of the land. The Fourth, the Fifth, and the Fourteenth Amendments point this out, they point out something called due process, and due process is where you are presumed innocent before, until you are found guilty. You are not presumed guilty until you are found innocent. And what we're doing with this mask mandate is we're treating every person like they're sick, okay? And that's disgusting to me. All right, we didn't do it for tuberculosis, we didn't do it for any other disease, and we had kids in these schools, and all these other sickness rates were going up throughout the years that we thought were eradicated, but they were not. And they were going up, and these kids are not masked, those teachers were unmasked, and it's unfair, it's not right. And we, we don't work for DESI, okay? We are elected by the people of the town of Carver, okay? We do not, yes, yes, they set policy, it says, right, as I think Mr. Cost said in their statement, they said educational policy, that's it, okay? So, I am really bothered by the fact that we went out, they tasked us with coming up with a decision for the mask mandate, we put the survey out to people, we heard people, we, people emailed us and called us, and we saw all kinds of stuff on social media, even though it's not an official group, but we did see it, you know, at least I did. And to me, it was overwhelming that the people didn't want masks, or they were okay with being optional, all right? So, I thought having it be optional was the fairest decision we could have made, and people could make their own choice, because we are free people, we are not subjects, we are not servants of the state, okay? And that's what people, and if we're not going to teach this in schools, and I've been pushing that we do teach it, and we have a really good history department down here, and we're lucky, and our superintendent is a former history teacher that appreciates all this stuff, but if your kid is not being taught this in school, teach it to him yourself, okay? And I agree with what you said, we need to stand up, because if we don't stop it now, the next thing is going to be vaccines. And I'll ask one more question rhetorically. What do you call it when someone says they want you to do something, or there'll be negative consequences? Isn't that called coercion? Isn't that called blackmail?
Yes.
Okay? As far as I'm concerned, I try to be as professional as I can be, but I'm a regular guy, I'm a regular, but I actually think sometimes, and I don't agree all the time with what everybody else thinks, Commissioner Riley did to me was reprehensible, and he should be removed from his position, all right? So, same, so.
Thank you for being brave.
Well, it's just my thoughts, but saying that, I have a motion I'd like to present, and I made copies this time, so you can read it. So, if you can pass these, if you can pass these around, it's short, but I tried to make it big so you can read it. So, take a sip of my drink here.
I'll probably get to Gina.
Okay, it just simply reads that I move that the Carver School Committee maintain our previously voted mask policy of optional, of optional for all students, staff, and visitors until the Mask Department of Public Health provides scientific evidence that cloth and paper surgical masks are effective in stopping the transmission of virus particles. Because, right, they're asking us to do something that is not based in science.
Just one of the things we should start with.
Okay, so, we have a motion. Would anyone like to second that motion?
All of you stick right?
We have no second, so the motion will not be addressed?
If I may.
Sure.
I just, I agree with what you're.
You guys just baying United States.
I agree with what you're trying to do, Andy, but I can't, in good conscious, risk our schools losing funding and opening our town up to a lawsuit. If we want to start a petition to the state, I am more than happy to go on board with that, because I don't agree with what they're doing, and I agree with a lot of what you said, but I don't feel it is my place to potentially put our entire town in position of a lawsuit, and if our schools lose funding, our schools close. And if our schools close, we're educating nobody.
You still have to take, you still have to take.
You're educating nobody, and nobody loses these kids.
You still have to take a stand, and quite honestly, if they decided to pull funding on us, I would suggest that we sue them, okay? And that's what we have a legal department for.
Or you can knock, and then we'll sue you.
Halifax is.
Okay, so, before we move on, there's just something that I would personally like to say. As a member of the Carver School Committee, I view this as us being a committee that looks out for health and safety and well-being of our students and staff while they are in our district. I would prefer to see us be proactive and to start the year following the mandates, as I believe they have been put in place to try to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and the Delta variant. We were successful last year with the mitigation strategies that the district used, and towards the end of the year, we were able to taper off. I'm hopeful that we will hopefully have that happen again this year, but we simply will not know until the students are in school and we see how things develop. So, that is my personal feeling on this, and I just wanted to make that clear. So, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I just want to say.
My child almost died from a vaccine, just so you know.
I just want to say, just to have on the record, that whatever anybody wants to do is fine, I believe in freedom, I believe in freedom of choice, but I will not be wearing a mask at these meetings, okay? No matter what statement is brought up, all right? I did it once, you know, in solidarity with the kids, I'm not doing it again, because they're being forced to have these things on their faces now. I'm not doing it, so just wanted to say that.
Okay. All right, so, next on our agenda, excuse me, the audience needs to please be quiet and be respectful of the meeting proceedings.
I tried that, but you don't listen. I'm not asking you to say they can't have a vaccine, and they can't have a mask, you can wear eight fucking masks if you want, but I don't have to, and my son.
So, am I going to recess now?
Because you say so.
Where's Peter?
It's tyranny.
I'm sorry.
Where's Peter?
He's in the hallway.
That's all.
Can you, can you, can you please refrain from speaking in the way that you are? And allow us to proceed?
Well, you don't listen, so.
As I was in this position for two years, it is, we do have procedures and stuff, you know, we try to be professional. I understand that, and I really wish I could just be nice, but I've sent a lot of emails to this entire board and Scott Neef, and I have never once gotten a response from anyone sitting on that board. So, when you say respectfully submitted email, that's horseshit. I thought I responded to you. Yeah, you may have. That's possible, I apologize. And Scott Neef always called me back the next morning. He may disagree, but at least there's a response. But if you expect me to think, Stephanie, you're even bothering to read it, I have no reason to think so, because you've never once given me the time of day. So, I've been respectful for a year and a half, before kids in your system, and you've never even said, hello, Mr. Harrington, yes, I'd like to respond to you, even just with, hi, I read it.
Okay, I would like to continue to move on with the agenda. Next, we have the health and safety protocols for the return to school.
So, I'll start reviewing the health and safety protocols for the upcoming school And a lot of this is actually very similar to what we presented a couple of weeks ago. So, at the time, we actually asked about, at the time, we actually asked, I said we were looking for information from the school nurses and the school administration. So, we did have a meeting and reviewed these protocols with the school nurses, we had a meeting and reviewed these protocols with the school administration.
It's not peaceful, it's definitely.
I know it's not. Do you know the national vaccine injury, the 1987 Six Act, 1986 Act? Farmers are liable.
Would you like me to continue? I can just go forward, if that's okay.
Vaccines aren't even being discussed tonight.
Well, people, I don't think people will be able to hear what's being discussed if you continue. They will be. Your name on you, and you're going to force it on your kids, shame on all of you.
Apologize for the disruption at home. Mr. Neef, if you could please continue with the information, thank you.
Okay, so, in terms of health and safety protocols, we had talked about really the close contact protocols the last meeting, I had reviewed them. They are the recommendations from the Department of Education and from the Department of Public Health, and we reviewed them with our nursing staff, who are actually supportive of them, we reviewed them with our administration, which is supportive as well. So, a lot of this information is going to be similar to what we had seen a couple of weeks ago, but certainly, I'll go through it again. First of all, the key messaging is stay at home when sick. So, I want to say to the community, that's still the key message. If you're not feeling well, we're asking you to stay home, that is probably the best way for us to, you know, manage the virus, is by having people stay home if they are sick. So, I don't think I'm sharing the Zoom presentation.
No.
Now I can. There we go, look at that. Sorry, sorry for people at Zoom. So, stay at home when sick. And, you know, they've changed this a little bit from last year, and they've broken into two categories of unvaccinated and vaccinated. So, first, I'm going to give you the unvaccinated individuals. So, that's all of our elementary students, obviously, and a portion of our middle high school students. And it's actually very similar to last year. So, unvaccinated individuals presenting with COVID-19 symptoms should stay home and cannot return to school until three things. One, they've had a negative PCR or rapid COVID-19 test, two, have an improvement in symptoms, three, have been fever-free for 24 hours without medication. What's changed a little bit is the list of symptoms. If you look over at the right-hand side of the screen, they've broken the symptoms into two categories. The bold capital categories are the ones that they're most concerned about, so a fever of 100 or above, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, muscle aches or body aches. They're saying if you have any of those symptoms, you should stay home and be tested. Down below is symptoms in combination. So, if you, you need two or more of those. If you just have a cough, you don't have to, you should stay home until you feel better, but you don't have to have a COVID-19 test to return to school. If you just have a headache, if you just have fatigue, yeah, I'm not going to go through the whole list for you, I think you get the concept. So, if you have two of the symptoms below and none of the symptoms above, you are not required, and no one's required to get tested to return to school. If you have one, if you have one of the symptoms above and anything below, or just one of the symptoms above, then we're asking if you're unvaccinated to have a COVID-19 test to return. And obviously, like we did last year, the nurses are going to spend a lot of time on this, so the nurses will be taking the attendance every day, the students who are absent, they'll be following up and making phone calls home, having conversations with parents, there's no expectation that anybody's going to like memorize this tonight. My intention is actually, we're going to have some presentations, it's going to be on the COVID websites at both schools, so that information will be readily out there, the parents will be on the website, but we'll probably do some reminders during the year like we had to last year about this. But really, also, if you're a son or daughter, or your child's homesick, the nurse is going to be talking to you and kind of going through this protocol, but I wanted to go over it tonight. So, what's different if you're vaccinated? Vaccinated individual presenting with the COVID-19 symptoms should stay home and cannot return to school until they have an improvement in symptoms, unless they have one of the bolded symptoms. So, what the research is saying is that the breakthrough cases tend to have these four bolded symptoms. So, even if you're vaccinated and have a fever over 100, we're saying you need to stay home, and you can't return until you're tested. It can be, it can be a rapid or a PCR test, if you have a new loss of taste or smell, et cetera. If you're vaccinated and you have the symptoms below, we're just saying return to school when you feel better. No testing is required, that's the recommendation. And as I said, it's because they're saying that they're seeing, where they're seeing, the symptoms they're seeing in the breakthrough cases are these bold capital symptoms of fever, difficult breathing, new loss of taste or smell, muscle aches or body aches. So, any questions about staying home when sick? I know there's a lot of information there, as I said, it's going to be on our COVID websites that both buildings have, and we'll. And we'll keep reminding the community of this. And the nurses, we have individual conversations with families. And this is the same for our staff, actually. So the staff is going to follow same protocols.
Okay, great.
Any questions there before I move on to the next kind of topic?
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah. An individual who tests positive, this is actually the same as last year. The recommendation is self-isolation for a minimum of 10 days. Return to school is based on time and symptom resolution. You do not need to test again. So once you test positive, you don't have to go have another. Because that was a question we got a lot last year, is do I have to get a negative test to return to school? And what you have to do is after 10 days, you can return to school provided you're fever-free for 24 hours. You experience improvements in symptoms. And as I said, return to school is based on symptom resolution. Repeat testing is not required or recommended. Again, this is actually the same as last year. There's nothing different here.
Okay.
Close contacts. Close contact, they've changed the definition. Anyone who's been within six feet of a person for more than 15 cumulative minutes while indoors during the positive person's infectious period, which is the 48 hours from the time the person begins to feel ill or if they're asymptomatic and test positive from the time of their positive test. So if you're outside, you can't be a close contact. So there's no close contacts at recess. There's no contact, close contacts at gym outside. There's no close contacts in athletics outside. So saying anything that's occurring outside is a no close contact situation.
Scott, I'm sorry. I think last year it was like 15 cumulative minutes during like a 24-hour period. Like what do they, so is cumulative, cumulative is?
It's four, it was the same last year, 48 hours. And it was cumulative to last year as well. That's the same.
No, but so if I spend more than 15 minutes with somebody over a two-day period?
So fif, that's how we did it last year too. So 15 minutes if, if it's five minutes, five minutes, if it's 10, five minutes, that counts 15 minutes cumulative. It doesn't have to be 15 consecutive minutes. And either the change there from last year is really the while outdoors. I mean, sorry, the while indoors. That piece wasn't there on last year's definition. Close contacts exempt from testing or quarantine protocols. Asymptomatic, fully vaccinated individuals. So if you're fully vaccinated and you're identified as a close contact, you don't need to follow the protocols we're going to go over in a second. So will identify a close contact, but you don't have to follow a protocol. Classroom close contact, which I know this caused some, people had questions about this last year. But this, we put this into place at the end of last year. An individual is exposed to COVID-19, positive individual in the classroom while both individuals are masked as long as desks are three feet apart. So if your desks are three feet apart and you're masked. It's not. It's not a close contact.
Why don't you guys go as spy? Have a backbone. You guys are, you guys are voted in. Do you understand that? You have our votes. Those are appointed officials. This isn't, this isn't any kind of the terrorism. We vote you in, you respond to us. PCR test, say it again. There is no PCR test. PCR test is done. The 7/31st is still using it. You're wrong. My child, look up the records. My child, you stupid fools. We asked you to leave why? Oh, you asked me to leave. My child, if your child was in trouble, was he? He's in trouble and he's got a mask on his face. You know what I said to Riley yesterday? Right? Mother before I mean, she says.
I'm going to call a recess.
She says.
A motion to recess and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
You guys have a motion in a second?
Yes, we have a motion in a second. Of to recess.
Fuck with me what?
Discussion?
Yes, discussion. Well, the three of us voted.
Voting already?
To recess, yes.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Hard to hear over that.
Move the meeting into recess.
Yes. So we're moving our. Meeting into recess until things can be, we can be able to proceed with being heard. It is 8:30 PM and I would like to call the August 30th, 2021 meeting of the Carver School Committee back to order. So we are again in session. And I'd like to continue on with the agenda. And I do believe the next item, Mr. Neef, your word done, correct? With health and safety protocols? You were not done, okay. Okay, if you could please continue? Thank you.
So we were talking about close contacts and the testing quarantine protocols. So an asymptomatic, fully vaccinated person doesn't have to follow the close contact.
Can you reshare your screen?
And we were talking about classroom spaces and three feet apart and both individuals wearing masks. No close contacts in the buses, which we talked about last time. And no, no close contacts for anyone who's been identified as having COVID-19 within the last 90 days. So there's a lot of things here that makes you not be a close contact. So the question is, where can close contacts really happen? If you thought about last time when we discussed this at our last meeting, we had a conversation about the masks. And I think there were some concerns that said if both individuals were masked, you don't have to be a close contact. Obviously, with the mask requirements that are in place, both individuals will be masked. So that's going to limit your close contact. So there was a little bit of discussion about where can you be a close contact? Well, you could be a close contact in athletics if you're inside. You could be a close contact in the hallway. You have your friend in the hallway who you always spend time with. You could be a close contact at lunch possibly. But it's the students who are sitting around you because you're unmasked eating lunch. You could be a close contact in gym. Even though you're masked, the mask, the, both individuals being masked only applies to a classroom setting where desks are three feet apart. Otherwise, the mask doesn't apply. So really, your close contacts are going to be in your non-classroom spaces. That's where they're going to be in general. But where we are currently, this is going to really limit, it's going to reduce our number of close contacts. So if we have a positive case in school, our close contacts can be way down from where they were last year, which is really the goal. We want kids to be in school. We want kids to be in school on a regular basis. So reducing our number of close contacts based on these things is, is important. And I do think that the protocols that are in place are going to have a really reduced number of close contacts compared to last year. But if you do happen to be a close contact because you fall into one of the categories where it happens, they're giving three options. One option is what they're calling test and stay. So seven days for exposure to the positive individual. You can remain in school as long as you're asymptomatic. You wear a mask, which obviously you always have, already have to do. And you take a rapid test in the nurse's office daily and test negative and self-monitor for symptoms for 14 days. So even if you're identified as a close contact, if you choose, you can continue going to school. You just have to go to the nurse's office in the morning, have a rapid test and wear a mask, but we have the mask requirement. These are all parent choices. So the parent, if your, if your student is identified as a close contact, the nurse is going to reach out to you or administrator is going to reach out to you. We'll figure out you're a close contact, then we're going to go over these three choices. Option one, you can do tests instead. And you can come and get tested in the nurse's office and come to school every day. Obviously, if you test positive in the nurse's office, then you'd have to go home. Options two and three. Option two is a quarantine for seven days. Return on day eight as long as you're asymptomatic and receive a negative test result and self-monitor for 14 days. Option three is a no-test option. Quarantine from 10 days from the date of exposure and return on day 11, self-monitor for 14 days. The nursing staff was comfortable with all three of these options. And basically, we'd allow families to choose if you're identified as a close contact, which of the three options you would follow. So any questions about close contacts, the three options we're going to make available to families if you're identified as a close contact? The key message here is with the masking and with vaccinations and the bus and our, our number of close contacts really should, and no close contacts outdoors, our number of close contacts should be really diminished as compared to last year. Social distancing, I'll hit on this real quick. Guides to the best you can to maintain three-feeding classrooms in the cafeteria. And most of our classrooms will be three feet or more. We're going to keep desks in all of our elementary classrooms. We're maintaining desks in the elementary cafeteria facing forward six feet apart. So we may not even have any close contacts in the middle high, in the elementary cafeteria. Middle high school, we talked about this last time, we are returning to tables. Students will be within six feet of each other. So there's a possibility of a positive case in the middle high school, that we will have some close contacts there. We just, we are going to run four lunches. And, but to get everybody into the cafeteria, so we're not running lunches all day long. We, we are returning to tables and students will be within six feet. We are going to keep assigned seating in both cafeterias at the middle high school and elementary. No lockers at the middle high school. That was something that was put into place last year. We're going to maintain that. It just keeps, it cuts down on kids, some of those kids' interactions during passings, which will hopefully cut down on close contacts. Monitor bathroom usage, same thing we did last year. We're just going to try to keep, reduce the number of students in the bathroom at one time because that also cuts down on your close contact connections. Maintain one-way stairwells at the middle high school. Hand sanitizer stations will be set up through both buildings. Wipes will be widely available for, for all teachers. Testing. So we're going to continue optional testing of symptomatic students during the school day. That's what we did last year, the rapid test if you're symptomatic. And you come down to the nurse and you've filled out a consent, which we'll be sending home a consent for everybody to do like we did last year. Even if you don't fill out the consent, you can do it at the time. No one's going to get tested without the nurse contacting you and you giving permission to do testing. We did that all in the second half of last year, worked really well. We will plan on implementing the test and stay as a close contact protocol. So if you as a family choose to get tested daily, identify as a close contact, we will be doing that. We are, at this point, planning on doing weekly pool testing for the staff. The staff has requested that, so we're honoring that request. I have to be very direct and say, you know, we've been, we've kind, we haven't had a consensus about pool testing for students. So my question to the school committee is, if you'd like, we can definitely survey the parents. Reach out to families. I have a survey design that could go out tomorrow or Wednesday and get their opinion on whether they would have an interest in pool testing during the school day. It would be 100% optional. Parents would have to opt into the system. And ultimately, our concern is, you know, if you don't, if you have less than 50% of your students participating, that diminishes some of the value of pool testing. So we, if we reach out to families and say, if we offer this, is this something you'd be willing to participate in? And get their feedback and weigh, weigh in their feedback in terms of making a decision whether we're going to, look to implement a voluntary pool testing program or not. So I just wanted to get those committees' thoughts about putting a survey out to parents about pool testing. In terms of, this is all being covered through state and federal COVID funding. So this is no cost to the school district if we do the pool testing. They'll actually supply us with all the tests. And they'll supply us with the staffing to help implement the testing. So, you know, before we make a decision on this, we just feel like we, the administration honestly couldn't make a solid recommendation. They wanted, they wanted to hear parents' inputs before they came with a solid recommendation tonight. And the other, I mean, the other option would be the school committee say, well, we don't think we have a lot of interest in pool testing and let's not consider it. It's nothing we have to do, it's just something that's available to us in the school district. That is being supported through the Department of Education. So thoughts on a survey about pool testing?
Anyone have thoughts?
I have no idea how parents would feel about pool testing. It's not something I've heard be brought up. I can only speak for myself and as a parent, I probably would not enroll my children in that. I don't feel like our case count is high enough to warrant it. But I don't see the harm in sending that survey out and finding out what other parents, because there could be a lot of parents that would be interested in it. So I don't want to necessarily take that option away from them. But I haven't personally had anybody approach me about pool testing. So I, I, I don't have any knowledge from the community either way.
So in last year, it was just the middle high school athletes?
Last year, we required of all the middle high school athletes. We actually did have a discussion with the athletic department about this. And right now, the position and the recommendation is that we would, that we wouldn't want to require the athletes to do it if we're not making it optional for the entire school. We didn't want to require the athletes to do something that other students didn't have to do.
I mean, I don't see the harm in putting out that survey, but I'm expecting a lot of resistance to these little ones. Some don't like shots, some don't like anything up their nose or down their throat.
Yeah. And ultimately, like I said, if people aren't interested in pool testing, we're not.
Yeah, and to Jen's point, you know, we had things pretty much in control in the elementary school last year without pool testing.
Yeah, so I, I'm looking for some direction. If you want me to go forward with the survey or not even survey people at this point?
I don't have any problem with the survey myself. I, I, like I said, I like more data than not. I think going forward, I think you can decide from there, see what the results are.
Okay, so then we'll put out the survey and ask people their thoughts about pool testing.
Yeah, I mean, I think parents should, should have the right to be able to answer that for themselves. I don't want to speak for anybody.
Yep, absolutely. And if you are at some point going to adopt pool testing, it would clearly be communicated to everyone. So this isn't the authority to do anything. It's just a survey to ask about.
We'll bring the results back.
Just on people to be, yeah.
We'll bring the results back to the committee with a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And like we said, if there's, if there's a small number of interests, it doesn't make any sense. It would have to be an overwhelming interest, I think, to say we're, we want to go forward with pool testing.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that people got it, that it's just a survey and a choice. Okay, thank you.
All right, and then last thing, we are going to do parent forums. The purpose of the forums is to review the negative COVID-19 protocols that I just went over in terms of close contacts, staying home when sick. So the middle high school is going to do a question and answer on Thursday, September 2nd at 6 o'clock. Elementary is going to do one, two days actually, before their open houses on Wednesday, September 1st and Thursday, September 2nd at 5. This, those are being communicated home to parents through the buildings. So they'll be sending home a Zoom link. Those are going to be Zoom meetings, not going to be live. So they'll all be Zoom meetings and I'll be in all of them, I'll be in all three of them. And, but it's led by the building administrators reviewing the protocols for their buildings.
Okay, thank you.
And that is, that is it.
That is it.
On health and safety protocols.
I just have one quick question. In terms of locker usage, will athletes be able to use lockers in the locker rooms? Or was that discussed?
I don't know what we're doing with that.
So we've checked with other school districts. They're going to be able to use the locker room, but they're not encouraging, we're not encouraging students leaving stuff in their lockers overnight.
Okay.
They're colliding and stuff while they're there. They can use space in a locker. But overnight and line for storage, you run out of there and clean.
Okay.
And that's pretty consistent with other school districts doing. We're likely to have the children, we'll disinfect and stuff like that. For the most part, the lockers will just be kind of a holding tank for maybe 14 supplies. But most of the kids are taking their stuff with them onto the field and stuff like that.
Okay, I was just thinking in terms of athletes that, you know, may have a game after school. When they get to school, what do they do with their things? That's all I was thinking of, so. Thank you, Jen.
That was a good question. It just made me think of another one. As far as gym classes go, will they be changing for gym and using lockers or?
They are changing for gym and lockers. And same with our, we're not three-nine targeting the week or something.
Okay, thank you. Good one, thank you. Okay, thank you. So if everyone is all set, we will move to.
And. Next item on the agenda is the food service update. We're actually combining that into the financial update.
Okay.
So really, so the next gen item would be high school.
High school handbook, okay, great.
So we're glad to welcome Mr. Martin to come up with the reviews and changes in the high school handbook.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. So a lot of the, the changes for the handbook this year is really just, you know, some procedural stuff. How I did this document is yellow will be new. It's a new addition and the kind of pink color is red. We're taking that out. So pretty much page eight, you'll see that, you know, some school council people are in yellow. Typically, at the start of every school year, we will add new school council members. So we haven't filled those positions yet.
Okay.
Page 11, this is, this is our schedule, very similar to what we had last year. And we were kind of tasked last year to kind of come up with a schedule that would be, allow us the flexibility if we had to change instructional models during COVID. So we wanted to reduce passing. So prior to. So prior to this, we had, this is very similar to the schedule we had last year, we had four, four teaching blocks. Prior to that, we had seven-period day and it was rotating. So one of the things that we were asked to do is to kind of reduce passing, passing opportunities in the hallway. So rather than students pass for seven periods, they only pass for four. We also took, got rid of homeroom and kind of tied homeroom attendance or daily attendance to the first period. So there were, again, for, for COVID and, and distance protocols, we introduced a four-period day last year. The other thing is, rather than the additional passing, you're obviously in four classes with classmates as opposed to seven. So, you know, at the time, we were talking about, you know, tracking where students are and making sure, you know, who all the close contacts were and who were sitting next to them. So we figured that if they had four classes instead of seven all year, then it would be easier. There were some unintended circumstances, so students would get eight classes. So a lot of these classes were semesterized. They would have four half-year and for the next year. Prior to that, most of the classes were full year. What this enabled some of our students who struggled academically, and I think as a result of, of the pandemic, a lot of students did struggle academically with the instructional models. If I was a student and I struggled with math and I failed math first semester, there was an opportunity second semester to repeat that math class. So prior to this block schedule, that wasn't an opportunity. It was either be night school or do something online, and oftentimes, parents would have to pay out of pocket. So we don't know what's going to happen this year with Delta, COVID, whatever. So the idea was to keep this schedule, modify, tweak, make it better. We, we put in, really the big addition is the academic study, that period three class, where we're really going to use this, not really as a check-in, but really, you know, for, for about 10 or 15 kids to be with a teacher, where they can really do like a academic check-in, a social-emotional check-in, a mental check-in, you know, really form those relationships. Because there's a lot of kids coming back from, you know, they've been out of school for a year and a half, or, you know, you know, there have been some struggles academically, socially, and emotionally. So that's, that's the schedule. And Mr. Niffleuded to earlier, we, we were able to fit in four lunches, which we're going to spread the kids out a little more as opposed to the three lunches. It's all within the same lunch block, so that period four, you still have your 83 minutes of instruction and then your 25-minute lunch.
Is there a mistype on lunch four? Because lunch three and lunch four have the same times.
Probably.
Okay.
Yes. So lunch four is going to go until 12:39.
Okay, that's what I thought the intention was.
To probably start 12, 12:14 to 12:39, yes.
Okay. Good catch.
Thank you. It's great to present here.
No worries, Mary.
That's good. The second part, this was also, you know, as we went to a block schedule and we, students were in classes, obviously longer classes, similar instructional time, it didn't really make sense to have a mid-year examination for semester block classes and a final examination. So I think the understanding, especially with teachers and department chairs, was, you know, we can, we can, we can test our students on content, you know, more regularly throughout the year and not have a need for this, you know, big chunk, you know, 10% of your grade, you know, halfway through, and 15% of your grade, or, or whatever the breakdown was. So, you know, getting rid of mid-year and final exams. And, and really asking students to remember stuff in, in May that they were learning maybe back in, in August or September. So we, we took that out last year and no one really seemed to be that concerned about it, so we're going to leave it out. Page 27. So this is under dress code. A couple of teachers, you know, had mentioned that point A there, skirt shorts and rompers of length, no shorter than four inches above the student's knee. So that was in there as, you know, that has to be something students adhere to. And what a lot of people were telling me is, I don't think you can get, you know, you know, I, I think it's a sign of the times and the change in fashion, but they thought this was just not a good rule and who was going to enforce this. And, you know, there's, you know, these images of, you know, the assistant principal getting a ruler out and measuring skirt length and short length, and, you know, it really wasn't something enforced. If there was a dress code issue, we would kind of handle it a lot more subtly than that. So again, unless anybody here feels a need to keep it in.
So you mean you're going to retire your ruler?
And then the next part is probably, you know, there's maybe a little controversial nature to it. What we found this year is, in fact, what I found in my, going into my seventh year as an assistant principal, is that, you know, there were, there were certain issues that were, you know, really flashpoints for some kids. And I think really what we've, what we've kind of looked at over the last 18 months is, you know, kids are hurting and kids come from, you know, traumatic backgrounds and a, a variety of, of family lives, and they're dealing with a lot of stuff that we, you know, a lot of, a lot of our teachers don't really know the backstory and that's, you know, for a reason. But oftentimes, a student would, you know, pull their hood up in class. Maybe because they feel vulnerable, maybe because they're experiencing some trauma, maybe they just don't feel great. Maybe they can't afford a haircut, which was often, often the case. So it ended up resulting in some type of minor discipline, but, you know, it was on the student's record and, and talks with Mrs. Cabral and Mr. Schultz, you know, we thought that the head covering, including caps and hoods, you know, that was what some teachers called a, you know, a non-negotiable, there's no hats and no hoods. And a lot of it was because it was perceived that it's a, it's a safety issue, that you can't, you know, you can't identify someone with a hat or a hood, which is not true. Our camera system, I don't know if you've looked at the cameras in the high school and, and the images we get, they are very clear, so we have no trouble identifying students. But we thought, just in, in supporting students and kind of meeting with them where they are with, maybe it's some mental health stuff, maybe it's just a comfort level, it's that idea of creating a safe and supportive learning environment, we are not going to enforce the wearing of hats and hoods. There's also kind of de facto process right now where you go into certain classrooms and teachers, you know, from classroom to classroom, they don't enforce, you know, the old no, no hats, no hoods in their classroom. So it was sending a lot of mixed messages. And, and, you know, I'm a rule follower and, you know, you would get some teachers, you know, with, with a similar personality trait as me and say, well, it's in the handbook, I'm going to enforce it. And oftentimes, that kind of led to really a power struggle. And again, of all the incidents I've dealt with as an assistant principal in my, my six years as being an assistant principal, when a, when a student has their hood up or their hat on, it's not because it's a defiance thing, it's more because, you know, they're, they're feeling vulnerable. Okay. Page 28, we're, we're removing extended school and really just kind of putting in Saturday school. Extended school was this, you know, it was an addition to the office detention where, you know, if something warranted, something less than a suspension, but something more than an office detention, you would get extended school and that would go from 2:00 or 2:15 to 5:00. Oftentimes, a lot of your high school students had jobs after school and, and really couldn't, or they had, they had to meet their, you know, sibling off the bus and they were really providing some childcare for, for the family. And we are moving to a Saturday school to see if that would work. So very similar idea. This is in lieu of a suspension. It's, typically, we'd be using this for excessive tardies, unexcused tardies. And again, we're just taking it from mid-week and moving it to Saturday. I know some schools have had success with the Saturday school model, so that's the idea of that. And we can also use Saturday school as a way to buy back, you know, some time for, for seniors who may have lost credit because they've, you know, just missed some days. And you can connect that idea of buying back time and making sure you're back on that graduation path.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Martin, just to go back on, on the caps and hoods, I have no problem with the cap and the rest of it, but the hood issue, I understand your point because, you know, I was there then, you know, have the hood on, you feel, you know. But would this also, if you saw a student doing this a lot and kind of withdrawing into the sweatshirt, the hood, would that be kind of a, would that be triggering kind of, would that trigger some meeting with them?
Oh, of course, well, yeah. Yeah, and, and this happened, this happens as a matter of course, you know, with the, with the current policy where we have no hats, no hoods, you know, there are those chronic students who kind of pull it up and oftentimes, they forget it. I, I think sometimes it was me with the mask, you know, going back and forth, you know, if you're out of school for, you know, a couple of weeks and, oh, I forgot my mask or. So yeah, we would, we would meet often and say, you know, hey, and oftentimes, it wasn't a defiance thing, it was, yeah, I forget I have it on, I have it on all the time when I'm not, the only place I don't have my hood up is when I'm in school. So you know, that, that, that's a conversation we would have and it would be a fairly respectful conversation, one-to-one. And I don't think I've had to call a parent to say, hey, you know, I need some help with, you know, Johnny keeping his hood down. Oftentimes, it's, you know, there's an understanding, I say, hey, you know, it is a rule, it is a policy, the teacher's just enforcing that rule, so I, I just need you to help me out.
But even more than that, I was getting to the underlying fact of why they might be doing it, especially in the, when it's not cold or something like that.
Of course, yeah, you know, yeah, so we would definitely, you know, talk to our guidance department and say, hey, can you have a check-in on, on Billy or Johnny and, you know, they seem unusually reserved and kind of withdrawn, yes.
So, you know, so we're.
Of course.
Be aware of it.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
And then on page 42, there's just some wording on, a lot of the anti-smoking stuff was based on cigarettes, things like tobacco and cigarettes, which we actually got one this year, but typically, it's vaping. So we, and, you know, the drug in, in the vape devices is nicotine, which was not in the handbook, it was really exclusively tobacco. So we added in nicotine and vaping just to that verbiage. There was a, if you look under second and third violations, there was a two-day out-of-school and a, and a monetary fine, which we never enforced. So we, we kind of took that out. I don't know what the rationale behind the fine was, and I don't know if that was more for cigarettes or tobacco use. That was, that precluded my time. Page 53, daily attendance, it will not be in homeroom. So those two are switched currently, is, is the red, it's taken in homeroom, now it's taken in first period. Page 69, again, it's just, you know, we have a sticker, we used to have a sticker in an assigned space, now we have a pass, and student parking is you can park anywhere. Because what happened quite often is, I get assigned space two, you know, it was empty, somebody come in, parked in my space, I parked in somebody else's space, somebody parked, so it was this kind of waterfall effect. So, you know, we have a vast student parking area and, you know, it's park where you may. If you get there early, you get a good spot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we do correct, need a motion to approve these changes?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school handbook changes with the lunch period amendment.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for presenting, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and thank you for all the work and the analysis that you provided.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so next we have Ron, to close us out.
Yes, I'll turn the brief of the agenda. I've got three items for you, two of which would require a vote. The first you see on your memo, which is just your warrant updates, August and a little bit of September, down to the penny, I've got your signature at the end of the meeting. The next item is a disposition of equipment, it has to do with our capital plan, so just a month ago, approved the capital plan, through town meeting, that part of appropriation, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me better now? How about now? There we go.
It's probably Zoom. We hear you fine, they hear you Zoom.
TV. And part of that appropriation included appropriation for two school buses as part of the capital plan. We will, hopefully with your approval today, be able to sell our two oldest buses and use the proceeds for that toward the ultimate purchase and maintenance of the new buses. You see the VIN numbers there, the 2008 Bluebird buses, one's got about 125,000 miles on it, the other one's, I want to say, in the 85, 86,000 mile range. Ultimately, I can't sell them unless I get approval from the school committee, per school committee policy DN. So it's the administrative team's recommendation to deem these two buses as surplus and will pursue sale if they are.
Okay.
Are these buses current, were these buses in service last year and there's no need for them to be in service this year?
That's correct.
Okay.
They were in service last year, we don't need them for this year, and new buses will be arriving in mid-winter. But they would serve as two of our current four backup buses. So we're in good shape in terms of backup buses.
Okay, and are these the two oldest buses currently in our fleet?
That's correct. And that's part of the capital plan outlays, each, every other year, we remove one or two of our oldest buses on the fleet to try to keep the fleet as new as possible.
Thank you.
Andy?
So these, Ron, are these buses the ones that don't have cameras on them?
That's correct. These still, these, I believe, are going to be the last two that won't have the arm camera. The new buses coming online will be installed with the arm cameras, that's correct.
I thought these might have been in school. All right, thank you.
Great. Would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion. I move that two, 2008 Bluebird school buses identified by the school administration be deemed as surplus.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Your last update is really some housekeeping regarding food services. So section four and section 11, the National School Lunch Act essentially outline the requirements for federal reimbursement for school lunch and school breakfast. Teresa and myself did an analysis of our school lunch reimbursement and it looks like we need to update our charging, our costs for staff adult meals.
Okay.
The rationale for this is simple, we only get a certain amount of reimbursement and, as you can see the formula down below, the reimbursement amount is predicated on the federal reimbursement rate, which is listed there, as well as this escalator that the USDA includes, plus a 7% meals tax. So right now, our current charges are 350 and 250, which is well below that rate, and that doesn't allow us to maximize the reimbursement for, federal reimbursement for food, for the schools. So it's our recommendation to simply move up the cost for adult lunch and adult breakfast to essentially the minimum, which would allow for reimbursement. So the recommendation here would be $3 for the breakfast and $5 for lunch.
Okay.
I have a question. How, do you know how, how, words are failing me. Do we have a large participation of adult purchases of meals in the schools?
We don't.
Okay.
No. And because the USDA and the federal government continued the sort of COVID statute to allow all students to get free lunch, a large majority of our revenues now for food service is federal reimbursement. And so this just allows us to maximize federal reimbursement for all food products in the school district.
I'll make a motion that we move to be in line with the USDA requirements and we change the price of the adult lunch to $5 and adult breakfast to $3.
Just a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that's it?
Yep.
Okay, so now we move on to reports from the school committee. Is there anyone that would like to speak, Jen?
I just, I actually have a couple of questions that didn't, there was no really spot on
the agenda. But I just don't recall seeing anywhere in the back-to-school stuff if we discussed, last year we had modified some of the start times and things because of COVID. Has that been published anywhere at the elementary and high school, like for drop-off pickup and start and end times of school? Is that coming out?
That'll be in the COVID websites and be updated for those meetings that are coming up. I don't believe, I don't think we've changed any time. At the elementary, we're going to say drop-off is 8:10.
Okay.
Instead of 8:05.
Okay.
End of the day is the same. Mike Middle High School is regular drop-off.
Just a slight two-minute change for dismissal. I think the six and seven get up at 2:03, equity, that was built, and high school gets up at 2:05.
Okay.
It's really based on the number of minutes per class for equity. It just comes out that there's a two-minute delay which helps us out because the young kid can get up a couple minutes before the older kids.
Perfect.
It uses the number of students in the hallway, et cetera, but it really came down to equity in the at night periods. We run, we're running two different schedules, it's a challenge for sure. But it, it, it's the same 7:10 and 10:00 is essentially the same 2:05, but there's a little bit of a window for six and seven.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question was, is there's been a lot of drumbeats about bus routes and when those are going to be published, and I just didn't know if anybody could.
This week, next day or two.
That's correct.
If not, if not tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to put you guys on the spot with those, I couldn't find a good spot to ask those questions. So I guess since I have the floor, I'll just say, I understand that people are angry. I'd be lying if I said that I'm not angry about things too. I'm trying very hard to not politicize the children of Carver in their education and all of us on this board, yes, we're elected, but like, we have everybody's best interests at mind. Showing up screaming and swearing at us is not going to affect change. Nobody's hearing your message in that way. I fully support taking a fight to the state. I fully support taking a fight to the governor and to Desi and to the Board of Education. Let's get those petitions rolling, let's do this the right way. There is a right and a wrong way. I thought Mrs. DeCosta was very well spoken in her public comment and I think the term rebellion, there's still a smart way to do that and a responsible way to do that, and we need to be setting an example for our children. And I'm not sure what sort of example was set in this room tonight. I hope all of the kids have an amazing start to school next week and I hope all of our teachers have a very successful planning time later this week. I thank all of our school staff and administration and their hard work and efforts to prepare our school buildings for the return of children, for full-time, in-person return of education. Let's focus on getting our kids the absolute best education that they can get. Let's teach them to read and write and do math and articulate their thoughts. And let's just try to be supporting and respectful. Nobody is happy that we have to wear masks at school. But I just implore people to please think about how your communication is coming across. And if you want it to be received, I do feel like there's a positive way and a negative way to do that. Thank you.
Going.
I share a lot of what Jen has said, I am, it's just very emotional to see the diversity in the town I grew up in. I knew not everyone's going to be happy, but we have to respect each other. We have to set a good example for our children. I don't remember any of this when I'm growing up and maybe because I was sheltered of it, you know, maybe there was controversies in town with the Booster Club or what have you, and I wouldn't know anything of it because my parents didn't take it to the kids. I think it's very important to focus on the fact we are in a good spot with the kids going back full-time, we need to keep it that way, monitor our numbers very closely, stay positive, set a good example, you know, your children here, everything. So, thank you.
Andy.
First off, I'd like to put in another request from our last meeting. Could, anyone that's presenting on Zoom, email, if they have prepared comments, could they email them to you guys, you or Scott first? That way if we have a technological problem, we can still see them.
Sure.
In case you can't get them.
Yep.
Me from the EPC, like the formal, like not, not like public comment, but like scheduled.
Yeah, people presenting through Zoom, yeah, if they're going to use, if they can't be here. I mean, those people in public comment, they can send us emails as well, so. So that's the first thing. Secondly, I mean, yeah, nobody, I mean, I've said a lot tonight and I meant everything I said, all right? Nobody wants to have contagious, contentious meetings, nobody wants to have contentious issues, but sometimes you have to stand up and fight, you know, and we are unique in this country, among the countries of the world, that we're based, our citizenship is, and our whole nation is based on freedom, right? And these people here tonight were right. We work for them. We voted in, buy them, we answer to them, right? So I've been on the other end of it, I've been, well, on the negative end of it, people giving me comments they didn't like and it's like, it stinks sometimes, but you want to help the town and you want to do the best you can to, to serve the town, serve the people. And when you say you're a public servant, that's exactly what they are in this country. I mean, we are in this country, we, they are the ultimate power and it was given that way to them on purpose by the founders, okay? And what makes me angry is that dictates from bureaucrats that aren't elected, right, telling us what to do, and especially when they reverse decisions on us, that just really made me angry. So that's all I want to say, and I, I mean, I applaud the people standing up, I applaud the people that have a different opinion than mine and, because you're free to have it. And I would fight for that, respect that, you know, till the day I die, you know, and you're, you're right to say it and express it. But other than that, I want to say to everybody, have a great Labor Day, which I would think is the sixth, and squeeze as much summer out as you can until then. That's it.
That comes to me. So there's one thing that I would like to read that is from the Carver School Committee Policy Reference Manual, for everyone to hear and to be reminded of. The Carver School Committee's primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs, and procedures that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students. The committee is charged with accomplishing this while also being responsible for wise management of resources available to the school system. The committee must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body to formulate and adopt policy, by selecting an executive officer to implement policy, and by evaluating the results. It must carry out its functions openly while seeking the comments of public students and staff in its decision-making processes, which is something that we do. To me, I wish that the issue of masks with regards to public health and safety has, was not politicized, because this has become a political issue and we are not a politically motivated committee. We are a committee that is supposed to be focused on all the things that I just mentioned and our students of over 1,500 that are getting ready to come back into classrooms and into our district next week, as well as our staff and our, and our teachers, everyone from our cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians. So I just want people to take a breath. I understand everyone is very passionate about this and I think respect should be presented on both sides of this issue, whether you agree with someone or you disagree with someone. Respect should be shown to everyone and everyone has the right to have their own opinion. But also everyone deserves to be treated with the same level of respect. I also would just like to say that, not indirect response to everything, but there's something that I do just want to clarify. I do read every single email that I receive as a member of this committee. I do ask for more information, I do ask for things to be researched, I do ask for answers for every single email that is sent to me. And I also make sure that it is sent to Superintendent Scott Neef, as he is the administrative authority for the Carver School Committee and as such responds to all emails that are sent to the Carver School Committee, and also reaches out to families by phone and also offers to meet with people when necessary. And we are very fortunate in our district to have a superintendent who every, who responded to every single email and phone call that he received last year during COVID, while running our school district in the midst of unprecedented times for everyone. So I just want to be clear, I understand what my role is, I take it very seriously. And I am also respectful of people being able to have difference of opinions, but I do ask that if you come to our meetings, that you respect everyone in this room who is trying to do what is in the best interest of the Carver Public School District. And that is all I have to say. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and we have a second. This needs to be, no, just, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, 9:16 PM.